Because there was an issue this week about suspending the rules, and we all voted for that. If you could just clarify that for the audience, I would appreciate that.
Yes. If you look at your agenda packet, audience and other members, it explains about public comment and how we proceed. If we are going to, and it does say on the last item, through a request of the chair and a majority vote of city council, public comment may be limited when there are 15 or more people signed up to speak either on a public hearing item or the public comment period of the agenda. In order for us to do that, we have to suspend the rules, then vote on the timeframe that we're going to have, and then proceed from there. Does that clarify it?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, if I may, Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Howrillak.
I just wanted to, I'm not sure if this is for the city attorney or the city manager, but I think it's, there's no doubt that if somebody has a particular benefit that they've been promised and that the city needs to carry through with that. The other side of that, though, is the input number, that being which, you know, whether or not there's an employee contribution. And just to make sure that everybody is on the same page, is it correct, is it possible and has it been done that the amount of input either from the city or by the employee level has changed or can change, meaning the percentage of one's salary that goes into either a defined contribution or defined benefit plan?
Mayor, if I may just ask a couple of clarification questions. Are you speaking of collective bargaining agreements or are you speaking of all of the employees as a whole? Are you speaking of retirement plans or all of the above?
Well, naturally, a collective bargaining agreement is binding as long as its term is in place, and it can only be opened through the acquiescence of the union itself. But the contract itself, when you roll it forward to a new contract, can it, can it change the terms of contribution by the city and by the employees? And I could ask the same thing for each individual contract, because it's more of a broader question, that these are moving numbers over the years with the agreement of the employee groups, isn't it?
Well, I'll have to handle that. Mr. Zerlak?
The short answer is yes. Contracts, once they are opened and subject to good faith negotiations, can be modified to calibrate the contribution of either the city or the employee or both toward a pension benefit.
Mrs. Bell, Councilwoman Bell, turn around.
Can I ask you the question?
For existing employees?
Yes.
Okay, so if we were contributing 7%, all of a sudden we could say, yeah, that's what we promised, but we're only going to contribute 3%.
Are we talking about a defined contribution or defined benefit?
Either one.
Okay. If someone's in a defined contribution plan and they retire, there's no longer any contribution on behalf of the city for that plan. That's 70% of all of our employees. When they're gone, there's no legacy costs. For the balance of employees, there's a defined benefit plan, and every year, our actuarial firm does a valuation to determine if it's actually sound in terms of a level of funding. And I believe that we're either 98 or 102% funded in that defined benefit plan. The initial, my initial response is the same. At that point, if a contract opens up and the city's contributing X number percentage and the employees contributing Y, if our objective is to maintain that same funding level, let's call it 100%, we can certainly change the relationship of contributions from the city to the employee if that is agreed upon.
And is that a point you negotiate with every contract?
It's a point that I'm negotiating at this, at this time.
Thank you.
And as contracts open up, the answer is yes.
Thank you. Madam Mayor.
Any other questions or comments with regard to response to public comment? Councilwoman Kerrwin?
Well, yes, I have about three, but I want to make sure that we're in accordance with our rules, so I don't want to take the place of other, these two.
Did anyone else who did not have a chance to speak yet wish to speak? Councilwoman McGinnis?
I just had a question. I wanted a point of clarification, and I think that it could probably be best answered by the city manager. But there was a speaker that had attempted to point out that the city management budget just continues to increase, but I wanted you to just go into some detail of that because I know we had discussions during our budget sessions about the fact that restructuring had caused us to consolidate several departments, and you brought them in under the city management department. So I wanted you to just speak, speak to that, please.
That's correct. The city manager's office in the city of Troy not only is responsible for overseeing all of the day-to-day operations for the balance of the organization, but if I take a look at John La Morado, John is also our pension administrator and secretary to the retirement board. I am also the economic, or I'm sorry, I'm the downtown development executive director. Many cities our size have a full-time person performing that function. In fact, there's a lot of cities having, has a full-time person perform that function with a much smaller DDA. We've also absorbed the entire economic development function as well as the community affairs function now as part of the city manager's office. So if you took a look at all the people we had performing those functions about five or six years ago, I think we're down about six or seven full-time people, yet we're still performing those, all the functions. That resulted in the offices of the city manager growing, though, but you have to take a look at the other departments that were either expunged or reduced.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kerrwin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd really to go back to some of the points that were made a few minutes ago, and that had to do with cutting costs, cutting costs specifically in terms of our employees. I'm reminded recently of a Sunday morning paper where I noticed that the governor had been challenged by the National Laborations Board regarding her unilateral, now stating employees will simply be down 3%. That there are laws in place, and one can't sit here unilaterally and say, let's simply cut all employee salaries. Either of you want to respond to that?
Well, for the classified and exempt personnel, I'll start with them. As you recall, there was a series of meetings that I had last year where I had met with those two groups, and I told them that I would treat them as well as any other labor union.
Mr. Manager, just, I, I just need the, the response to the, to this specific. Could we unilaterally say?
No.
Under, okay, that's it. It's, they're bargained agreements, and it's not only state laws that govern that. There are federal laws, and there are ramifications from any kind of decision like that. So to simply say, well, you know, we could do that, we saw in the paper, that can't happen, and the governor herself basing her budget on that will not be able to be in compliance.
We have to negotiate in good faith, and with three of our unions, they have arbitration rights where an independent third party would make a decision on, for both of us, if we could not agree the terms at the negotiation table.
And the binding language is working toward a fair and equitable agreement, and that's the national language that binds us all.
As well as bargaining in good faith.
That was that. One other, I know one of our speakers came up and talked about the transit center. I just wanted to point it out, even if someone doesn't have a computer at home, that computers are available at the Troy Public Library, specifically for seniors. I saw a flyer recently, actually with very happy pictures of seniors, which pointed out the more than 10,000 hours of training for computers is allowed at the Troy Public Library. And if one was interested, say, in the transit center and all of the documentation behind that, simply clicking on the Troy webpage, the homepage, a link goes directly to the transit center, and all of the documentation regarding that, including where the money comes and the restrictions on it, is available. So if, if anybody would like to help any seniors in the room who would need guidance on that, I know that that's available currently at the Troy Public Library.
Mr. Zerlak?
To add to that, Councilman Howrillak asked if staff could put something on our webpage. We're developing it still. It'll be on this week, and so there'll be a link on our homepage that talks specifically about the transit center. That talk, we'll have our city allocation that we've, that we've put toward the center. I think it's $1.3 million.
It's there.
It'll talk, I don't think it's, I don't think the page, the site is up yet, though.
It's there.
Oh, it's up?
Yeah. I just announced that.
Okay, well.
Mr. Zerlak?
Thank you.
It's on the homepage, it's web.
I thought it was going to go up tomorrow or Wednesday. Thank you.
I was on it.
Okay.
Any others?
On the homepage. Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
I'm ready to move on, but I just, could somebody tell me how long the citizens for the public library have been in?
Friends of the Troy Public Library?
Yeah, how long have they been around?
50 years, at least.
50 some years.
Almost.
Almost 50?
50. This was my understanding.
There's so much bitterness going on here. Here's a group that's been around for 50 years. They tried to come up with a solution. I would just ask you to leave them alone and not attack them. They've tried to come up with a solution. If you look at what they've done for this community in the past 50 years, it's unbelievable. They're a wonderful group who tried to come up with a solution. They don't need to be attacked. Thanks.
I'd just like to make one concluding remark here before we go on with regular business, and that is, when council made the, the decision on the budget to fund public services due health, safety and welfare over the items that are quality of life, it was a difficult decision to have to take out money for the library. And it is not an enviable position to be in because people are supportive of having a library in their community. I think that it's very unfortunate that our community should be torn apart by such an item, but it shows how passionate people are about various items. I would hope that all people, regardless of their position on this, would look for accurate information and choose to vote on election day on November 2nd. That is their way that they speak through the ballot, and I know that people come to the city council meetings to comment because it is the public comment section, and they are allowed to do that. It is not an agenda item for the city council, and the city council did not put this item on the ballot. But for people that are watching, that week after week, we have this come before us. It is because during public comment, folks can comment on regular business, consent agenda items during public hearings, of course, and any other item that is on their mind, and that is addressed under the public comment section.
Mayor?
Yes. Councilman Howrillak?
Yeah, I'm not sure I really understand the specifics of what, what Councilman Slater is saying. I think perhaps a broader way of putting it, at least in my own words, is that I think we should at least try to remain civil towards each other here because the day after this, the, the election, we're all going to be waking up and we're all going to be residents of Troy, and, you know, the way we treat each other is something that is going to be remembered, and this is simply the marketplace of ideas. We can disagree with each other. We can even think that, you know, the other individual was crazy or out of their mind in a, in a euphemistic way, but, you know, this is a public forum, and, and so that's at least trying to be more civil than we have been.
Further comments in this section? Council, do you wish to have a break before you go on? It's 9:10, or do you want to continue? Pardon?
I'm free.
Okay, five minutes, five-minute break. We'll return at 9:15. Council's back in session. We're past the time. We only took five instead of 10. So, anyway, under regular business, um, we have a request for closed session, so we'll need a, uh, resolution for that.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Be resolved that the Troy City Council shall meet in closed session. Troy, the Ida Rudak Trust, as permitted by MCL 15.268E, pending litigation.
Support.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Councilwoman Howrillak, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Howrillak?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, next is the interlocal agreement for participation in a crash investigation team with Auburn Hills Police Department and Bloomfield Township Police Department. Could we have a resolution? Councilman Slater?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Um, if it's okay, I would move the resolution as printed.
You have a second?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Slater, Councilwoman Slater and seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Uh, Councilwoman Beltrameen and then Councilwoman Kerwin.
I, I actually think this is such a good example of communities working together, particularly to do things like control overtime. I'd like to have Lieutenant Livingston, if he would come, give a little explanation. I think it's an opportunity for people to know the kinds of things we really do to cut costs.
Evening, Madam Mayor and, uh-
Evening.
Distinguished City Council.
You want to adjust the mic, 'cause a little girl's up there. There we go.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, the reason for this interlocal agreement is, uh, is again to save overtime costs. Typically, uh, if we get a fatal crash or a serious injury crash, uh, even if it's on a weekend, uh, and we've gotta call in the fatal team that's comprised of, uh, members of the traffic safety unit, that's all overtime costs. Generally speaking, you're talking five or six officers plus a supervisor to, uh, to police that particular, uh, event. Uh, one of the things to consider is from the time they get a call at home, the time they get to the scene and start the investigation, that's time that that road is closed down. All right? This particular interlocal agreement, uh, encompasses the expertise from the City of Troy Police Department, Auburn Hills Police Department, and Bloomfield Township Police Department. And if, uh, in fact, that there are no Troy Traffic Safety Unit officers working that particular day, if Auburn Hills and Bloomfield Township have officers working on duty, they will be, uh, dispatched to the scene in Troy to, to begin the preliminary investigation, uh, while a couple of officers from Troy are called in. Now, typically, again, five or six officers, if we got two or three people from other jurisdictions coming in, that's fewer officers that we have to call in to pay overtime costs. And having those officers from other jurisdictions come in and start the investigative process, so that's much sooner we can complete the process on the scene and open the roads again. So, uh, part of the process with this interlocal agreement is every year, we will do a study to find out just how much overtime it has cost, how much it has saved us, and we'll be able to report that. That's part of our process as well.
Uh, Councilwoman Beltrameen?
And I understand that they are all trained in the same methodology, pretty much.
Similar. Uh, the Troy Police Department is, is actually right here-
Off the line.
-as far as investigating traffic crashes. The others are, they're, they're real good officers, but they're limited in the number and they're limited in their training. Uh, every month, officers from all three jurisdictions will get together and train. Uh, Traffic Safety Unit officers, we do it on a monthly basis, as it is, one day on duty, overtime costs, we train for these types of things, and, uh, we'll be inviting the, uh, Bloomfield Township and Auburn Hills officers to do the same. And we're moving that traffic, or that, uh, those meetings from Troy, Auburn Hills, Bloomfield Township, and, uh, to get a feel of how everyone's doing. Eventually, we're all gonna be doing the same thing with the same equipment, uh, and one other nice thing about the interlocal agreement, uh, it actually opens up grant, possibilities for receiving grant money when you have a collaborative effort between agencies. You're more apt to be eligible to receive grant money for equipment, overtime costs, and things like that.
Are most of the, um, crashes that would come under this team, do they occur on I-75 because of the high speeds?
No, they-
I know they concur on the places, but most of them?
No, I would say, I would say not. Uh, we used to have some horrific crashes up on I-75 before they put that barricade up.
Right.
And since that barricade's been put up, those, uh, they're really, they're really horrible accidents have really diminished, uh, as far as, uh, fatal crashes, but, uh, and again, hopefully we, through our efforts, we'll be able to reduce those even more with, uh, proper enforcement and, uh, engineering efforts.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Kerwin, you had a question?
Thank you, Mayor. For the lieutenant and perhaps for the chief, um, this, I agree with Councilmember Beltrameen that this is another, uh, wonderful way to leverage additional dollars and diminish our costs accordingly as well. Uh, for the chief, this is one interlocal agreement. Um, do we have a number of others as well?
Yes.
Mayor, Council, we have two other interlocal agreements that are similar to this one. The one that this one's modeled after is the one we have with our special investigation units. It's with the same two communities. Uh, that went so well that we started going on this endeavor to create the partnership. That's our special investigations unit, interlocal agreement. The other one we have is our major case assistance team, which we brought before council, not that long ago. In addition to Auburn Hills and Bloomfield Township, it's, uh, with the cities of Birmingham and Claussen, and we each provide investigators for that, and that's the same principle that we're looking at here, which is if there's a major criminal action, we can call in investigators from several jurisdictions and work together as a team, and not only spread out everybody's expertise, and they may have contacts in the different areas, but it also helps us diminish our overtime costs.
And, um, another good advantage that our citizens might wanna be aware of is that it doesn't deplete our own-
That's correct.
-so that in case something happens here, would you like to address that?
That's a very good point. What, with, as Lieutenant Livingston explained, if we have a crash in our town, then we're pulling in all of our investigators to handle it. Uh, what we can do with this type of crash is we're only sending two or three of our investigators, we're only using, utilizing limited amounts of our resources, which allows us to be able to handle the rest of town. If we have, uh, when we have a traffic crash or a major criminal investigation, other actions and calls for police service don't stop, they continue, and people expect we're gonna still be providing that good quality service that we provide. So by, uh, spreading our resources out, having officers available in other parts of town to respond, we can still continue to do that.
That's, keeps our commitment to public safety, which is really our priority.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And thank you for continuing to work on these, uh, uh, interlocal, uh, agreements, um, because they're, they're to everybody's benefit, so-
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, could we have the vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Howrillak?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, next is our consent agenda. Council, do you have any items you wish to have exempted? Hearing none, could we have a resolution to approve all of them?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman McGinnis?
We hereby resolve that Troy City Council approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Councilwoman Slater, that we approve all of the consent agenda items with this vote. Discussion, Mrs. Bartholomew? The vote?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Howrillak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes, um, and we move then to memorandums, council referrals, council comments. Uh, Council, I have any comments, items you wanna bring forward this evening?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Uh, we did have a meeting before, kind of transcending our vision goals and objectives, and I'm hoping that you and the city manager can get together and schedule a time that will, uh, give us a full opportunity to explore that.
I, I think that, uh, I indicated, I'm hoping that the schedule will permit that, uh, in November, uh, let me go to the November calendar here, where is it? Either November 8th or November 15th, that we could have a shortened agenda, um, and then have plenty of time for a, uh, study session after. You think one of those two dates would work, Mr. Zerly?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
I'll drop the staff tomorrow morning.
Maybe we wanna use both of them. We may wanna do it on the 8th and then again on the 15th, so-
And, Madam Mayor, I know that you had mentioned that, um, boards and committee review will be coming up shortly.
Next, next week.
And, uh, I know that Joanne Thompson, for one, uh, had some information she wanted to provide to us. I am hoping that prior to us seeing that material, that management will look at ways that are more responsive to, I believe, Councilmember Beltrameen's suggestion, that perhaps there are alliances that can be made in the community where some of the, uh, boards and committees can be far more effective, uh, and perhaps Councilmember Beltrameen will speak to that to clarify that one more time. And I'd also like to point out in VISIONS 2020, that there was a suggestion regarding lifetime learning committee, and I think that that would be most beneficial, and that I don't, I did not see, uh, see that addressed in, um, the outline for our boards and committees review. Uh, perhaps Councilmember Beltrameen will.
We, we did talk about joining some, and perhaps there's some committees we may wanna shrink down, join together, and change the name on it, um, or there might be some other things. Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Well, that is one of the, one of the things we talked about, was combining, shrinking, seeing if there are other groups in the community that could offer as effective service or recommendations to us, and that part of it was not addressed in the report that we got from management. It, the report we got from management was very good about telling us what, from a manager's perspective, there was still a need for, and what could be done away, but there was not some study, and as I, as I went through the 2020 report, again, it, you're right, Mary, they did talk about a lifetime learning committee, and there were lots of different committees that they talked about energizing the citizenship to get things done for the commi, community, and I think that we will talk about that some more as we talk about our own vision and goals, but such a committee would need a clearinghouse, so I think we can identify maybe a group that would be a good clearinghouse partner for such committees. Are there committees that we have that give us advice that we really don't need to be giving city advice on either venues we won't have anymore or things that we will be offloading to the private sector? Those are the other kinds of things. If, um, if we would reformat our planning commission, much like we had the persons for disabilities, could special needs, special interests be attended to there, uh, instead? So, those are all the kinds of discussion that I hope we will have, and if management has any answers to those kinds of queries, I would hope that we would get that as part of our packet.
You will.
Thank you.
Further council comments? Okay, uh, then we have a closed session, so we're in, um, recess, and we'll continue in the other room.